One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order? Go call shows. Alright, who is here for vacancy? Raise your hand please. Alright. We have a couple of questions we're gonna ask you, but the way I'm gonna do it is we're gonna go one at a time. The ones that aren't answering the questions, we're gonna go in the hallway and we're gonna shut the door. Cause I don't want you stealing answers and I wanna know what's, what you're really thinking. That make sense? So, we got a list? Do we need to make a list here? Just put them one through five or something?
Yeah, let's do that. So, let me get this show of hands. I got six names. Cole Scooby, Shelley Sheehan, Mike Belbag, John Ralph, Brad Rikis, and Patty Gessinger. Is that right?
Mike? Yep, Mike. Okay. Perfect. On the list.
That would be Cole Scooby.
We'll start with Cole. Rest of you, if you just head out please. I'm trying to make this quick. Sit there, you good? You don't have to stand.
But Juan is standing. It's one of the men that said he's.
Make it as difficult as possible, right?
Yep.
Laurel.
Oh.
Same one. I think there's a doorstop down there, but yeah, you can touch that door.
I wasn't the right person to ask. There we go.
Thank you, Laurel.
You're welcome.
Alright, Cole. First question. What do you think are the major issues facing our city?
Just not enough development, like to see some more business and stuff go up. Just production, I guess, all in general.
Okay. Good. What motivated you to apply for the city council position?
As a business owner, it starts to see things change and I think it could be a little more change, I guess. Like I said earlier, just more development.
What changes are you thinking? Anything that's specific?
Like changes.
Changes you're talking about, like you see some changes?
Yeah. Just more businesses, laws and stuff like that. More things to do with your families.
You have ideas on how to do that, or?
Get some, well, I'm on the planning committee right now too, so I think you just gotta work together.
Anybody else got anything? Amelia? What about your current or past occupations do you think will help you as a city council member?
Business owners and planning, I guess, of that. Be straightforward. Get it done, I guess. Whatever it takes.
Anybody else got anything? Uh, Dave? Nope. Next.
Uh, next would be Shelley Sheehan.
Shelley? Come on in. Thank you, Cole. How are you? You can sit wherever you'd like. Sit back, Laurel. Laurel would like you.
Who's my chair?
Alright, what do you think are the major issues facing our city?
I would suspect for a small town, it's going to be growing the businesses, keeping some sustained growth, getting people, families to want to live here. Keep the businesses going. I think the cost of our city, I, I don't have enough details to make a real informed decision right this moment, but cost of living for people in town, I think it's been good, but um, I don't know, I guess to maintain our, our status quo and make sure our small town stays here for the next fifty years remains viable, that's probably the biggest thing.
Anyone got anything? Second question, what motivated you to apply for the city council position?
Um, I've lived here about twenty-four years, so I'm, I am not a, I am a transplant and I've kind of waited a while to understand the town. I don't think a new person knows enough. And so now I think like I know enough about the town and the people that live here and how it works and I also have the time now and the interest and the enthusiasm to give it a time and a decent, decent shake for everybody in the town. So.
What about your current or past occupations do you think will help you as a city council member?
My main career has pretty much been working for large bureaucracies. I was in the military, then I worked for the Red Cross, I worked at the post office, and now I work for a, a large pharmaceutical company, but I've worked as an internal auditor most of my life, which is a, I guess I'd say a high give and take, give and take type position. I'm used to confrontation, I'm used to collaboration. I've used it my whole life and so I like serving on teams, I like serving at committees, I like getting to know other people and who the people are around me and serve me well.
Awesome. Anybody got anything? Thank you, Shelley. Next, Mike. Mike?
Thank you.
Sit wherever you'd like, sir.
Okay.
Mike, I got three questions for you, buddy.
Yes, no, maybe. There's your three answers.
You're gonna have to be a little more than that. What do you think are the major issues facing the city?
Finances, finances, finances. That's humor. Well, finances are always an issue. Your assessment issues will be an issue you're gonna have to deal with from the debacle that you had and you and I think you're gonna have to try to figure out how you're going to decide how you're going to pay for future infrastructure, whether you're going to continue with semi-cash and, you know, grants, et cetera. When you get involved with infrastructure things, I think you need to start bonding them and start ahead of time to get the bonding approved. But I think that started from your former city executive directors. Wasn't planning that they didn't do ahead of time and that put you behind and I think that's where the city council needs to start planning better.
Can I ask you a question, Mike?
Sure.
How do you feel about assessments?
I, well, as far as the streets, et cetera, I think you need to get rid of them. And the reason are they're just a hidden tax and I don't buy hidden taxes. At one time, they were good because part, you know, and I'm not saying Caladonia, but other towns when roads and sidewalks were being put in, part of the city had them because they had different types of roads and streets. So why would you assess everybody or tax everybody for, you know, payment when other parts of towns didn't have it? So they went to assessments, et cetera. Same thing with sidewalks. Part of towns didn't have sidewalks, but part of cities got bigger and they wanted to have sidewalks, so they went to assess those people instead of putting in a straight-out tax. And that's how assessments came about. As cities got bigger, then they started passing, you know, rules saying all the cities were going, all residents were going to have sidewalk. So then everybody got taxed for them. They used assessments for hidden taxes, but they didn't work, cause you can't have hidden taxes by saying, well, we'll assess people and that was another two percent tax on people. And they got upset with it, saying, hey, you can't keep putting on these hidden taxes. You gotta tax everybody and let them know that. And in this town, the sewer tax. We were paying for the sewer taxes all the time, but now they came up with the sewer tax. And we were paying for sewers before.
Are you, you mean stormwater?
What?
Are you talking stormwater or?
Yeah, the storm sewer. We were paying for that before. Same thing with the city lights.
Mike, I got five more people. I need to move along here. I got, I got, we got what you're saying there. Okay, you did a great job explaining it. Second question, what motivated you to apply for the city council position?
Well, I've been here about twenty-some years after I retired. My wife is from Caladonia and we decided to retire in Caladonia. And I've watched what has happened and I said, maybe it's about time I share my expertise in finance and think part of my job, I've been an educator for thirty-eight years and my last eight to ten years as a superintendent has taught me a lot about financing, about infrastructure and building. And we built a building, an elementary school, and you learn about bonding ahead of time and you learn to get your bonding ahead of time, not after the fact. And so, maybe it's about time I share that expertise.
Well, I appreciate you being here. One more question, okay?
Yes.
I think you already answered it twice. What about your current past, current or past occupations do you think would help you as a city council member?
Well, I, I think with my education expertise and then my administrative expertise of thirty years has, has helped me understand financing and how you deal with what is fair, equitable taxing, you know, what is not, and, you know, how do you deal with it?
I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake, who's next? John Ralph?
You're welcome to say it.
Okay, thank you. John? John, would you mind come sit in front?
Sure.
I let everybody else sit where else is. John, I got three questions for you, buddy. Okay. Answering all of them, you see. What do you think are the major issues facing our city?
Well, one of them is developing, especially on Kingston Street, unless it's problem.
Say that again?
Developed on Kingston Street. There are a lot of properties there that are just sale. I know the property owners may be not motivated because they think to sell. I'm not sure what the help goes for grants, whether it be grants or helping motivate people. But in getting businesses in town, trying to brainstorm, I know this has been going on, but continue to brainstorm about how to bring commerce and business without that.
Gotcha. Perfect. Anybody got anything? Alright, second question. What motivated you to apply for the city council position?
Well, I'm retired, so I have the time. I'm, you know, conservative about Caladonia, my hometown, I mentioned it a lot, I grew up here. And I do have some experience which may be translatable here. One was I worked for the artist and covered many city council meetings, so I had a sense of how things operate for that time period. And I was chair of my department for six years, managed a budget of a little over a million dollars, which is mostly salaries. The one time there was an audit, all departments had to go through being the budget officer. I'm happy to say that myself and I've been given assistance over eight and a half and five minutes.
Gotcha.
And I also was on our neighborhood association back in East Lansing for several years, you know, which interacted with the city council there, frequently and entertained projects and events in town. So, you know, I'm hoping that these things translate as, as experience for this job and also, as I mentioned in my letter, my grandfather was on the city council. And I know that he strove to do good things for Caladonia as a business person. And it's gonna be very satisfying to me to be able to do this for the city.
Last, anybody else? Last question? Kinda answered it already. What about your current or past occupations do you think will help you as a city council member? You can just reiterate if you want.
I know that it takes some cleaning up the speed, really acquainted with things as they are now, there's personnel in town, but as you said, at your presentation as mayor, you know, you're willing to learn, I am as well, and I think that we have a few things up pretty perfect.
You good, everybody? Mm-hmm. Thank you for coming.
Finally, I'm happy to see so many people are interested.
It's cool.
Good sign.
It's cool. It's great. This should be a welcoming environment.
Yes.
Jake, who's next?
Yeah, it is next.
How are you, Brad?
Nice to meet you guys.
Got three questions for you, boss. Answering all of them, you want? What do you think are the major issues facing our city?
My major issues is always pretty much like first responders, always like help make sure the water's flowing for the fire, police can do that, get out there and do their jobs. Ambulance has all the modern equipment and proper training to like, you know, help in case of emergencies. And the Zero Oil and Turbine Center is still being built. Those are some of the major ones. In always roads.
Gotcha. What motivated you to apply for the city council position?
I've been in Caladonia for a decade and a half, always loved it. Ran for the city council before and I was on for four years, so they got track record, so I was gonna move on from that.
What about your current or past occupations, and I answered this, do you think will help you as a city council member?
I have about a period of experience with first responders here in town. Did about six years in Caladonia every once, it's part-time. And I did four years for the city. So I know all the people and also worked in the Minnesota cities for residents in our area and getting more aid. Was also helping pregnant some of their release for the, when we had issues with the public pool up there for insurance reasons.
What do you think? You guys? Alright, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We were in time. Patty? Up in front there, two here. Got three questions for you, everybody else passed the list here. What do you think are the major issues facing the city?
Well, where to go. Not only the new family, but the elderly. I don't feel like we have a safe, enough safety spaces for the elderly. It sounds like they grow up and where's everybody? That's one. And two are the children. I've been, safety for the children in this town, cause I would like to up it and I've been talking, I don't know, five years probably about it. Main Street is really busy in the morning. It's just, I don't feel very safe, so I would push for more safety for the children and maybe even in the parks. I know just from State Mary's, like around there, there's, some of the kids come in and that ruin the stuff, ruin the playground, so that's a state mary's thing, but yeah. Just a safer, more safer for, up the parks.
What are your ideas for safer?
Well, I'm not like, more lighting. I mean, the kids are gonna be out here in the summer and they're gonna be running up and down, and now that I have kids that I let move, I would just, I, I don't feel them harassing me. I will not let them walk, make me ready to kill the main street and I, my street things are fine. We already got the stoplight at Main and Ramsey and then down at the elementary are my top, maybe even one of the day go. Just that whole stretch is too fast and the kids don't slow down. I mean, I, I really like those traffic lights, just even though like, okay, slow down, you're going too fast. You know, like we have on the highway and, or I really like what Brownsville has, that big thing, like here we are, slow down. It, that's been on, I've been talking to Jake about that, grants for that, maybe applying for some for more safety just for the children in the, in the streets.
Gotcha.
Right now. Well, third would be uh, I mean, we have a good town, just some of the, third would be some of the eyesores in town, maybe. There's a couple of them that we could maybe do something about. We have regulations and people aren't following them. And this town is beautiful and yet one little square block could be human, you know, come to have a pop. And maybe just get on some of the policies.
Perfect. Second question, what motivated you to apply for the city council position?
Well, I love my, my community. I was born and raised here. I've been fifteen years on the ambulance. I support the ambulance, the fire, and the law enforcement. I, I don't, I came here, I didn't have to stay here. I, I mean, I came here for the money, but I think here, my husband wanted to go down to Alaska. So, I want this to be a community where people wanna stay in, like a lot of my friends are around here because they went to school and got different jobs. I want people to stay here.
We're on the same page there.
Okay, so, I mean, I love having my kids here and I got three generations that state mary's and that, but I love that and not stay the public, my nephew's go to public, they're happy too. But I want people to stay in Caladonia. I want there to be a reason for people to wanna come back.
Third question. What about your current or past occupations do you think will help you as a city council?
Hey, I wrote these down, you ready? Well, I got the fifteen years on the ambulance, so I have learned about some of the city's policies and what is needed and I how that all works, how budgeting works, how we get this every ten years or, you know, we gotta raise taxes for this or how we don't need it, we don't have the money, we don't have the room to store some of these things. That's the thing. I'm five years that I used to go in jail. So I see things that most of public might not see, but this week we all saw, I mean, there was a big drug bust in this town and it was when you think, I don't know what was public, but when, that scares me. That scares me that that could have been in our neighborhoods and that I don't want that, you know, what, I don't, I don't want that from my kids. I didn't even know what that was until I was out of college. But it's there and it, you know. So, sheriff's office, I've run, I've done a couple of board committees, so I've been, you know, I've been in the public, I've had to run, organize, stuff like that. I worked at Abel, I worked at I Can, I worked Stumpy's Pizza, I, you know, I can, when I grew up in Elsie, it's a good time you knew, I worked just for it. So, I understand management, I understand role, I understand leadership. Mostly the sheriff's office and at late night, if you ever see a foreign commercial, I used to work at Foreign and Foreign. But, yeah, lots of work, I can.
Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Really, anyway, she's really coming.
That's personal.
Yeah, I, I am really, I'm actually really glad that people are stepping up. I mean, that's, if nothing else, that's great that we've had so many people come forward and maybe hopefully in the ongoing elections, you know, they see it.
Alright. Sit wherever you'd like, sir, but I'd like you to go. Got three questions for you, buddy.
Sheryl, what's up?
Uh, what do you think are the major issues facing our city?
Finance is a big one. Future of our local businesses.
Finance is a broad term.
Balance of the budget.
Okay.
Balance of the budget. Future of businesses in our town. And future of a sanctuary for families. Or not, not, not having that.
What motivated you to apply for the city council position?
Just wanna make sure that we have a future. I wanna make sure that the future of this town is a little bit better than what I see, how I see it. Might be wrong, but that's how, that's in the future of this town, businesses, that, that means. That's where, um, the magic comes in.
What about your current past, current or past occupations do you think will help you as a city council member?
I'm more into trying to implement new ideas, something that might work, might not work, I'm sure of that. I've always known that. Always tried something, if it's working, or if I feel like something's not working, then I wanna try something, I want to try and save things, expecting different results, so.
Can you bring that one up for you? No? You too. Good, Jake? I think there's anybody else up? Guess at this point I need to have a nation. Morning, I appreciate everybody showing up for this. There's gonna be a lot of people here, it's cool.
Yeah, it's often, many people are interested in this, this is exactly what we want.
Please don't take it as a negative. This doesn't work out for you, please run again, you know? This doesn't work out for you, please run again, you know?
I, yeah, this is one of those situations where it's, there's no, there's no process prescribed by law or anything like that. It's gotta be public, yeah, everybody's here, so I don't, any, I guess any process you wanna come up with is allowable.
About the vote, can we vote the nominations, or?
I guess no. Yeah, there's, of course, no, no right to privacy, no, so.
Well.
Make a nomination, then you need a second.
Yeah, I mean, it would be as simple as if.
Do you want us to step up?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can abstain.
You wanna have people already ready?
If one of you feels strongly towards anyone, any candidate, you can make the motion to appoint them to the seat if there's no second, if it fails, and that's. Yeah, for, yeah, motion, you can do that as many times as it takes, or free to discuss it, but I, I know how that feels. That you would not want to do that.
I think somebody has to start, but I'm, I'm gonna start off nominating John Wilk to the city council position.
Do you need a second?
Uh, well, I have a couple multiple topics people in my mind about John Wilk.
All in favor? Or we gotta do it individually?
No. Any discussion or?
Or discussion, all right. David, do you have anything to add? Do we have to individually vote here, Jake, or how do we do this?
I would recommend a roll call vote.
So we're gonna have to do the roll call vote?
Um, yeah, you just say it, I'll call for the vote, and then just name everybody and ask for their vote.
David?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, Isaiah, but.
John, you have a job. Come on up here. You're going in the fire, brother.
Yeah, I can see it, unbelievable. The ideas that you guys have shared here tonight, and I actually agree with Main Street walking the dog. Um, crossing Main Street, they're coming like 35, 40 miles an hour, straight shot. So I think that is.
We have a couple guys in the payroll that maybe can curb that a little bit.
Alrighty, I wanna thank everybody for coming for the great, this kind of a turn on for a position that isn't paid on.
All right. And just to clarify that. Sign your stuff.
Swearing on your, oh, yeah. There's gotta be points paper? Yes, indeed, once.
I have a question.
From December 31st, 2026. A year, right?
It's two years.
He chose both the term. Two years, two years, gotcha. And approve MI energy rate increase.
Go through.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
All the same sign, won't you carries? There's a scary one, public comment? You want more public comment?
But, um, you just said something about MI energy rate increase, how much are we gonna pay for it? Or what, what do we approve?
Uh, so, approve isn't necessarily the right word, this is informational. Uh, this is what MI energy is raising our rates, which we then turn, uh, well, sorry, I raised them by, it's just passed through mostly, but, uh. So 2025's increase is a 1.7, 1.7% increase from Derrin Power Cooperative. Uh, we will be seeing a decrease in the nighttime energy rates between 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Um, the changes in the power cost. We, they range from like 4.7 to 20, oh, that's, oh, that's a, power cost went down for some wholesale members, that's not really relevant to this, but. Uh, our power cost increase for 2025 is 3.2%.
Good morning.
Casey?
Some public work, a couple dates here. Uh, street department, I mentioned last meeting, they were, uh, working on cleaning up some stuff off the walls and getting things painted up, freshened up. Uh, putting in some new shelving and stuff, tidy the place up, so they've got that looking good and pretty well wrapped up. Uh, our street sweeper that we budgeted for placed the order first of the years, usually do it with major equipment. Uh, we worked anticipating a delivery until about April, uh, the first part of May. Uh, they had a machine that became available, so we actually put delivery that a week before Friday. So that's nice, so we're ready, ready set roll for sweeping. Um, electric department this week's taking down the holiday decorations. Um, water department, uh, we've got some unknown leaks out in the system. There was one private line that was found here and repaired today. Uh, but basically we've got above a double flow coming into the sewer plant than we would at an average day. Uh, so we suspect there's several leaks out in the system, whether it's our water mains or, uh, you know, service lines. And then it's finding its way maybe into some older sewer systems. Um, so we've been checking manholes for extra flow, still monitoring, um, you know, pumping at the wells and all that stuff. So hopefully today's leak will, you know, take a good chunk out of that. But I imagine a warm week of weather here, we're probably gonna have a few water mains or lines start leaking out. Um, I was growing, because it's been so cold and there's so much frost, they don't surface very well, you know? So that's, that's gonna be a continued inspection, maybe a few days looking for those. Um, then on sewer side, uh, the new wastewater facility, Pete and Craig did a clarifier training last week in a startup. And electricians are still tying up a bunch of loose ends down there. And then, uh, Laupes Show provided us a few dates today for, uh, some more continued training on new equipment at that facility for startups. Um, and Pete has got some continuing education scheduled for the first week of March, and then Craig as well for the first week of April. That's what I've got for you guys.
You have any questions? Yeah, I'm just curious, I'm sorry, did the sweeper come in that we were budgeting for?
Yep.
Same price?
Yep. Yeah, we actually ended up getting the sweeper we ordered, but this one here was, it was like Spolcorp or a different community. Uh, so it came with a few extra added options that we didn't order, so we, I mean, we got a better deal than what we ordered for.
Casey, I got a question for you. Is, is possible leads? How, when are we gonna find out?
Uh, so, you know, we do remote reading for utility billing. Um, the guys went around town, do a remote reads and then lowered them. And our system will flag high, high usages, I forget what the parameters are, but, um, basically, the basic percentage that it's above or below the normal, it'll throw a flag. So we did find, um, a couple property owners that had 25,000 or 18,000, um, versus, you know, a typical 5,000 to 6,000. Um, so that, that's one way we've been looking. Um, the other way is opening up manholes in the Santa Curie Sewer, looking for extra flow, kind of trace it. Um, all of our lift stations have pumping logs. Uh, so far, none of those have changed, they've all stayed pretty standard. Uh, so that helps us narrow it down to, uh, kinda the older part of town, closer to the sewer plant itself, where everything gravity flows right to the plant. Um, checking storm drains, um, you know, I guess just kinda relying on the public to help us if they see something there. Uh, this particular one over here was a call two Sunday nights, there's not, yeah, two Sunday nights ago. Um, she had water squirting into the wall of her, her basement, you know, an older stone foundation. Uh, and it was right where her service line came in, so, pretty good indicator was that. So, uh, the next day we went out, backed up the curb step, got it shut off, the water quit, so that was how we identified that one. So she ended up with a new service line today.
Jake, what do you got for us?
Uh, keep it somewhat brief. This Thursday, myself and Mike turns to the angle, it's very clear, we're gonna go to the southeast of Minnesota, the municipality annual meeting and cast on Friday night. Um, that is where we'll set the, uh, we'll vote for legislative priorities that group is gonna bring to the Capitol and lobby, um, on our behalf. That, this group is very focused on public safety, especially on ambulance. Um, they, they were the ones, they're responsible for, um, a big push for the public safety, for the ambulance that we got, um, last year. That's gonna pay for, a good chunk of that ambulance that we're gonna take delivery of. Um, so we're gonna go and hear what they've gotta say and then, uh, cast a vote for legislative priorities. And there is still spots if anybody's available to make that one. Quite a dying commitment, I understand, and probably about six hours total. Um, everyone get back until like 10 o'clock, I'm doing the thing, because there's a steak dinner in it for you. Um, then Friday, um, I'll be at another meeting of Coalition of Greater Minnesota City. That's another legislative priority setting deal on Wednesday. And then, um, hoping, we, I hope to go to St. Paul on February 12th, that's the city's Day on the Hill. That's another legislative priority setting day, but another big one to get in front of, um, some of those high-power decision makers to try to get some things to start breaking our way. Um, and then.
February 12th, you said?
February 12th, or, wait, that's a Wednesday. And then, uh, March 5th, I'm gonna go to Chatfield and do some training with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota City. It's just a, it's a big audit and TIF refresher for the most part. And then we've had with, we've had a couple businesses reach out for TIF for some big projects that are starting this summer. Um, and I just could always use a refresher on that stuff, it's extremely complex. And then next month, the planning commission is gonna hear some ordinance updates, um, cannabis for some needed updates, just to get ourselves a compliance law. And then, um, they are gonna hear a chicken ordinance, I believe it's been requested, and then, um, I think that's it, just chicken and pot.
Chicken, pot, dogs a little bit, I guess.
Yeah.
What's going on with chickens?
Um, well, we don't, the city doesn't have an official stance on chickens one way or the other, so, uh, because we've gotten some questions bottom end, we've been chasing some roosters down. Uh, but we don't have anything on the books that says you can't have a rooster, so that will be where we'd start, um, or rather what I'd recommend. So those, those public hearings will take place on February 18th, Planning Commission. Uh, we did not do anything with dogs, I think we've, we've got enough on our code already that that was legislated well enough, but chickens are not legislated at all. Uh, I think that's it. Oh, uh, the last thing is we, Casey and I have been taking quite a bit of calls and, uh, meetings with engineering firms that are gonna submit on February 14th for our civil engineering commission.
Thank you very much. New business, military rock. I'll give you what's going on here, Jake.
I will, yeah, I'm gonna introduce this. So this is something that.
We got a couple people here to help us.
We've gone, we've kinda introduced this a few times, but never, never made a decision on that, that's a meeting. Polly of Laurel on the group, but I think they can discuss it or explain it better than I can.
Well, thanks for giving us a couple minutes here. Our chief is kidding, we've been looking at this in a very true way for a couple of years now. Um, we've got some really good ideas, we've done a lot of research, we've actually found a big rock or boulder, if you will, that we would like to have painted in 3D and placed in North Park. So on the highway, so people driving by would be able to see it, and it would be placed, if there's a spot chosen that it will work. Where we're thinking is the 3D structure that is out at North Park, that hasn't been reached for years. Not that it's serving a purpose at this point, but I think in the past, the city has offered to remove that. So we were thinking that would be a great spot for the rock, um, people who might be in wheelchairs or elderly who don't wanna get up to walk, to look at it, would be able to drive in the park. We'll write up a law next to it, check it out where, and. So anyway, we just felt it's a great way to honor our brave military personnel, past, present, and future. Um, and we're hoping our residents and visitors who drive by will enjoy our colorful monument, and just be encouraged to remember this love against the freedom. And important in these small towns, I think. Um, again, our wish is to place the rock out at North Park, if that is possible. Um, like, is Laurel, you had something you wanted to say as well, did you?
Well, we, um, Molly and I went to.
Well, we, Molly and I went to Mason City, Iowa in the fall, and looked at these huge rocks, picked out the one we wanted, we thought we wanted, and we've gone and looked at many military rocks, and Iowa is full of them, there's one in every county, painted by the same individual. We have someone in mind for painting the rock, we have pretty much made a lot of the decisions where it could happen. We're not looking for any huge financial assistance, we raised a lot of money, streets, states, that's because we're going to write some more friends. And we've got examples or samples of the rocks, and some of you I'm sure have seen them in other, other communities and counties, I don't know if there's many around Minnesota, I don't know how many there are. But the committee has talked about it for a long time, everybody has ideas that they'd like to see perhaps incorporated. So that's basically, the real part is we've shown a lot of support, as we reached out with some vendors on this project, they either donated product and services, giving us percentages off. People are really kind of excited for this, this is just an addition, it's not just a military rock, but a three D one too, so it's kind of special. And in Iowa, they're called freedom rocks, so that isn't a name we're allowed to use because that's a home name of, by them. So we thought military rock covered the whole gamut of what we might want to see.
That's the theme, though, is powder or military.
Yes, yeah.
Is this rock painted on all sides?
Mm-hmm. It is for example.
Yeah, I think we've got them here, but...
There you go, yeah, we got, so...
Would it be the same thing on the other side?
No, it's different.
Okay.
Yeah, so people enjoy the whole, the one that got brought to mind, that I brought to mind was when Doug and I went to visit the John Wayne Museum in Luger Set, Iowa, and they had this beautiful military rock, and I liked the way it, there was a stone foundation, and then there was just a blank fence around it, so people weren't going to go close to the rock, and it was painted very differently on all sides than the first John Wayne's picture of the rock, than his military. But then it's to honor all branches of the military. However, the artists would choose to do that, so we've had great input into that.
And that rock has a foundation, you know, that would you need to prepare the site to support the rock?
Yes, yeah, and that's, so what our thought was, if it were placed where that three-sided structure currently is, I did talk to someone that would be able to, he came out and looked and he said he believes that it's a four-inch cement slab that's sitting there now, he would probably, with his help, remove that slab, which would make an indentation of about four inches, we would fill that with rock, whether it be river rock or decorative rock, that this large boulder would sit on, which would kind of help it sit more sturdy because it's not flat on the bottom, so it just gives it a face.
Do you know the dimensions of the rock?
It is roughly, I'm going to say five feet high, five feet wide, and I'm going to say seven to eight feet long.
Casey, what do you think of this? I'm totally for it, but you're the one that's going to have to bowl around it, you know, maintenance and middle term.
Yeah, I mean, I think regardless of where you guys choose to put it, as long as it's on, you know, concrete or stolen or something that's easy to maintain, that's, you know, our concern for public works, for maintenance.
I think we got to make sure Casey's involved in every part of this, you know, before you tear concrete out, before you do anything, he's going to say yes.
I, I do...
In my eyes.
That's right, right here.
I do know the state does have a little say on things that get placed along the right of way, I have no idea if it would be any kind of an issue that something will have to look into. I know we've discussed Veterans Park as well, too, there's some good spots up there.
And that was discussed, you're right, and I'm sure a lot of people are thinking that as well. That's a beautiful space, we just keep thinking that the visibility of it would just not be as, as much as it would be if it were out on the highway, as cars are going by and make it easy for, again, people that might, maybe harder to walk or get out of the car.
Yep.
So actually seeing, to move this rock into a space is a big challenge, and so more difficult, you know, make it, it's about four times.
We're going to, we're going to do it right, though.
I don't know if you know yet, or, you know, yet, would the proposed pound about, if that the rock, is the rock being way for that person?
We did kind of ask...
We don't think so, we don't, we don't expect any boundary changes at North Park for that.
I haven't, is this replacing that, like, three-level glass thing that no one knows of?
Three-sided structure is what I call it.
No, thanks, yeah, it's, I don't even know what it is, I was like, oh.
Jake, what do we need to do here? I mean, it's, it's basically, what you're doing is accepting a donation, but we, city staff, we need to know where it's going to go because there, there, that thing would need to be removed, and that's kind of the order that, and...
Like, future maintenance too, I guess.
Yeah.
We got to know a little bit more there, maybe, I know you guys had a meeting on this, so I apologize for catching up.
Yeah, so what they, what, I know from before our meeting, what we discussed is that they, this group would do all the work, where there would be no hospice city, and then there would be, what they're talking about, the walk that would be poured around it or poured twice, and I'm not quite sure, we wouldn't have really any maintenance concerns, I don't think, no grass, no, it's just all about if you wanted a park or if you wanted a veteran park, and then if you want to tell us to tear down the purple thing, which, there, I know there is some history to that, I don't know it very well, so I'm not very, really burdened by it, I guess I would say.
We, we will have quite a hole to get that out of here, almost all this cement, at least four feet of concrete. I mean, it's just a little more involved than if they're to get that site back to what it was.
Is that something we can do, would you say?
Yeah, we can.
How hard would it be, Casey, to just, if you cut it off, I mean, because if that rock will be going over the top, you're going to have to dig it all out, you know?
Right, yeah, we've talked about that a little bit, you know, pillars that are in the ground should be frost protected, hopefully everything stays together, but if those holster cut off, and that cement heats up and, you know, one of the sharp edges might slip out of the ground, so I think ultimately if that's the place we go, we should have to get it all going on.
Yeah, definitely, have everything checked, but it sounds like that structure was a mistake, nothing ever happened.
Somebody loved it when Laurel probably don't.
It had its purpose, it had its purpose in the foundation, it's been years, so I don't think anything is going to miss it.
My opinion on this is, we need to give Casey a month if you girls, or a couple weeks, and get our stuff together, exactly what we're going to do, and then bring it to us and we'll go down whatever we need to go down.
It's one of the big things, so have it right away too.
Yep. Make sure we got all our...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is a really cool project. I would love to see the devolved fields, just because I get up there in the summer, I think would be really cool up there, you know?
And that's what Veterans Park.
Yeah.
Basically, that's what it is.
It is, but at the same time, I'm thinking, is there anything there other than the name? Good names saved, and that, I do that part, but...
I would love to see like three light bulbs or something, you know what I mean? I just make it a point.
So what we would be maybe interested in doing, as time goes on for our next project, and if it's something that somebody has a good idea, maybe we could jump on board and start bringing things, military things up there, or anything like that.
Right now, other than the name, there isn't a lot of difference, but it indicates, you know, it's just...
It's just name.
Donated to the city by, I believe, John, that's why I ended up Veterans Park.
Yeah, awesome, awesome project, girls.
Girls.
Awesome.
Ladies.
So, do we need to do anything, Jake?
No, we'll just bring this back on to the board.
Yeah, so we're going to table it, we do anything like that?
Consider it tabled.
Tabled. Is it? Yeah.
There you go. For someone old in the back row, that'll go. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the custom fire pumper purchase.
Okay. Okay, this will table, in your, their, um, my information really has not changed, but the question in front of you is, should you approve this motor vehicle purchase contract for the pumper body on, custom pumper truck, or the pumper body contract is five hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-seven, on top of the hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred, bringing the total six hundred ninety-eight thousand and twenty-eight thousand and twenty-seven cents, and the city is responsible for half of that, two hundred and forty-nine thousand and fourteen dollars and fifteen cents. So at this point, and then, well, since, since last meeting, we've learned that if the city does not go through with the whole contract, that there will be a thirty percent cancellation to do, that thirty percent is the price of the chassis, not the price of the full truck, that'll be forty-three thousand and sixty dollars, or two thousand and eighty dollars, excuse me. And then there is the greater question of how exactly would we pay for this if you do go for it, and then I've outlined the bond and other options. So at this point, I suppose I'll take any questions, and then, there's three members in the fire department here, if you have anything you'd like to present, or anything, I'll leave that up to the mayor.
What a thought, boss. I guess, there's, like, Jake O'Line, I think. We talked our last meeting about options.
Yeah. I mean, we haven't really dug too much into it, it's just kind of, you know, if you want to go, I mean, what's, quick guidance, options, but what are they? What do you want to look at?
Did we talk about that last meeting?
Yeah, we talked, I guess we talked about use somewhat, and what you've done any research, did we look at use at all?
I mean, a little bit, that's where we started this battle, to the new because it was just within a hundred thousand dollars. That's...
Let's not call it a battle. It's not a battle, we're on the same team. Makes sense?
Sure.
I want your fire department to be great, okay, but there's certain times when we just can't do what you want to do, but we're going to do whatever we can to help you, understand that.
I got a question, Jake, Jake, this is for you. So we did not get a grant we were supposed to possibly get on November 3rd?
We did, we received fifty thousand dollars.
And we were hoping it was...
Yeah, we were hoping it was more than six hundred thousand dollars, right?
We, yeah, but, you know, with those all things, when you submit the grant, half your head's down, you ain't going to get anything, so fifty thousand was incredible. Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, that would be my answer.
Where would they store it?
At our station, we get rid of our white truck.
What one?
This one would fit.
And then would you sell the white one to help people?
It's not worth too terribly much.
Right, okay, and this is something we need?
Yeah, I mean, this truck's basically going on the way to calls, so...
Yeah.
Kind of like a rescue truck.
So just Caldonia gets called out, and then you probably talk to them, yeah, they help out other towns, and they, you guys probably have better equipment in larger, like that ladder truck saves them, girl, you know? Yeah, Caldonia, I mean, they could just get called, not to give us business, too, like, okay, look, Caldonia has the ladder truck and the pump truck and other places, and we have, the other smaller communities do not have that, they could call on them, they can, you know, you tell them.
Have we answered the question about if, uh, Laurel was ever to pay for their fifty percent? Is that, I mean, that's when we started this, Laurel was going to pay for half.
Yeah, we went to the meeting, they approved it, I don't know what else is said beyond that.
Okay, can they afford it?
So, that's one thing, just our town to, well, it would be, perhaps a levy for a gate, it's about a third, you know, based on the land value in your township or whatever, Caldonia Township would be paying for about one third, so we're looking at what we have for, we have to levy for the food, but it'd probably be twelve thousand dollars either extra, and then on top of the ambulance, it would probably be five thousand extra for twenty, twenty-six.
If we're looking at a total cost of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, twelve thousand, maybe the year isn't going to go very far.
Yeah, I think it's thirty-five thousand, it's like, that's going to be the cross for our half, you said seventy thousand.
On a ten-year contract, we're looking at about a sixty-four thousand dollar payment, see what they had about half of that, yeah.
How long would it come, come slow?
I mean, if we take care of it the way we should, only five to three years.
And it's not going to get cheaper?
No.
It's going to be more expensive after?
We went with a fairly screaming mod for us, they're well over a million dollars.
What are the options? Or what are the options to be moved so far?
At this point, right now, our options are either to buy this truck or to cancel this contract.
If you cancel it, you lose thirty percent.
Thirty percent of the chassis, forty-three thousand and ninety dollars.
Sell it.
Have a broker sell that.
Yeah.
Custom fire, the contractors, they are, they were explaining to me is that they are not, their dealer license does not allow them to sell a chassis, that was not an option. So they can't broker it for us, but hopefully somebody will come along and, and, if we were to terminate it.
But we still pay the fifty, thirty thousand?
Yeah, that would, that...
What if we took the delivery and then sold it?
We can't, we can only take delivery of the complete truck, they cannot ship just the chassis, that's the rub.
But I thought, I'm, I'm so sorry, man, but when this came about, this is before November 3rd, this approval of the big grant, that was the selling point, that if we buy it and we decide not to go with the body, we can just sell the chassis, that was, that was said.
That's how I remember it.
So where, now, why can't we sell it? If we want, I'm not saying sell it, I'm saying if we choose the option of selling it, but now we cannot sell it.
No, that's...
The salesperson told us that we can go ahead and sell it if we buy it.
Not the salesperson, but no, that was, what we learned is that was not an option. So we were told that was an option, our options right now are take the, or to execute the whole contract or to cancel this one.
So who told us that we could sell it possibly?
That, in our early, in our discussions in November, when we were talking to fire department, fire chief, that's what, what we went on, it was November, well, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but that was said at, in those meetings in November.
What I'm asking is, who told, who gave us the impression that it could be so? Who was the salesperson, or was it the salesperson who gave us the impression that we can just buy it and then go ahead and sell it if we decide not to go?
Well, I mean, at the meeting, we only talked to the fire chief, we didn't talk to the salesperson, but I, well, I can't, I won't speculate anymore.
No, I, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to understand, because I, and I, I know I'm fifty-two, I know I'm losing my shit, but I distinctly remember somebody saying, well, let's go ahead and approve, to get this approved, because we've been told, you know, that there's no more, and that, this is like a collector item, that if you buy it right now, you will be able to sell it, am I correct? You were there at that meeting, and that was one of the things that was told to us, right?
I'm, I'm sorry, free, we heard the same thing.
Yeah.
But that's not going to work anymore, that's the problem that we're into, that issue isn't, it isn't...
So that's not even an option.
That's right. It's unfortunate, but... You know, I did, I, I just, I did a little research, and I found a 2020, it's a Spartan Gladiator with fourteen thousand miles on, for just under three hundred thousand. Is that...
Is that anything that, I don't know, as far as the specs? You know, you say you gotta be thirty-two feet, this is thirty-two seven, I don't know if that.
I mean, we are in such tight spots.
Right, right.
I'm lost in mine, so.
Right, if I, yeah, I didn't know if seven inches would.
You're literally not in there. About the same as what's in there, right? It's thirty-four foot, six inch, you didn't mention. It's still about two feet, four, nine.
Right. Yeah, I don't know, if that's something you wanna look at? Um, I, I don't, you know, I just never called out or anything, but it sounds like.
How tall is it?
Nine feet, ten inches. Fifteen hundred gallon water pump, five hundred gallon water tank. The only thing they didn't mention here was foam. But four hundred and fifty horse cums. I'm sure it's not four-wheel drive, I know that was on the original spec, but that's just, that's an option, I don't know if that does us any good or not.
And that one's used?
Yeah, twenty-twenty.
What, twenty-two years on it, twenty-five?
Yeah, four.
Four?
Yeah, fourteen thousand miles, so.
Fourteen miles, three hundred and twenty-three.
Yeah, the dash doesn't mean it. In that order, I could add it.
One again.
Five ninety-five years. We got out of like a jump at this, we know, so.
Yeah. That was the intent.
I'm gonna make a motion to terminate this purchase. Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that, but I'd still like to mention that I realize that, that fourteen thirty that you're using now, you know, life span of that is used up, and I think we need to do something. Um, I just don't know if we're gonna justify it.
The one thing I brought up at the last meeting was maybe the used truck in an addition, when you're talking there, all the same money.
We gotta take care of this issue first here, boss, okay?
I'm just.
I know, but we're getting way out of the weeds right now. Issue is this.
So we just lost thirty thousand one?
Forty-three.
Well, we've got the grant, pay that.
You think anyone up here is happy about this?
Or public state?
The issue is that we can't swallow the eight hundred and sixty-five thousand. The, the used trucks that you were originally looking at, you, you said that they were in a hundred thousand.
There were some.
So like they were three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand.
Four hundred, yeah.
I mean, they would need a little bit of work probably as well once we got them, but but that's still about half the cost of what's one is two hours away. That, that's the thing that makes me concerned.
Maybe we need some guidance as to where to go from here.
How much time do we have?
I think this, this, this quote is.
This particular, the decision about the chassis or the decision?
The full decision.
Um, that's open-ended, what I, yes, I'd like to see is, it's not gonna be possible to necessarily say you're gonna get a truck on July first of next year and it's gonna cost this much, go out and find it, you know? But it's easy enough that this fire department can be given a time limit of budget and told to come back with options and then given, given those options and the council's preference, we will find a way to tell you how to pay for it. And then half the cost of this, this truck for us because we split that. However, you have to keep affordability in mind with rural as well, because frankly, you're, we're dealing with a, with townships that are not trying to levy a lot, they wanted, I mean, they want those levies to go down more than they go up, and so that's kind of would be very, very important to work with them before we come up to any purchase price and figure out what we can afford and then set the rest of it, which is a lot easier.
The other thing that also goes through my mind in this discussion is, you know, this eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar price tag, if we can spend half of that on a decent used truck, if we can find one, and then we still have half of that remainder, it would be better spent trying they have, so we can fit bigger trucks and we don't have to be so particular and spend, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars for a truck that's gonna fit in that space going forward for the future. That to me feels a little bit better spent money if for future problems than spending buying this really expensive one-off truck that's gonna have to be replaced too. So that's the only, that's my own.
Right, it's not necessarily the size, it's just the cost of the new truck. It wasn't any more expensive to do than that, they they're just make it fit.
Think it possible for someone to have a pickup truck before you make the decisions of canceling?
Well, we're just canceling the new one.
Well, that's my thing before you spend that forty. We are canceling to take a look at that truck, it would be pretty dear.
Sorry, my printer doesn't print red. It is a red truck.
Um, I, I, yes, um, but I think in the spirit of the original motion, that we, well, one, with, with the contract that's in front of us, we really don't have that kind of time. Um, I mean, they weren't very happy about First Delight, so I would like to let them know what's going on to your end later. But, yeah.
Is it on discussion? No? Can you have anything else?
Not right now, or is there a second?
Yeah, I just gotta second with it, I'm second.
So it's done, you can't like.
We're, we're in discussion.
Where is this used truck located?
The problem is, is that's not over, you're on the track now. You know what I'm saying? It's, we gotta just get through this first. I'm sorry, that way.
Is that discussion from, or is it just?
There's no way we can pay for this truck, is there?
Well, that's a hard question to answer, I mean, we have the cash. We could. We could, but it's what happens and how to pay for it, I mean, if we were to pay for it, the fire department would be stuck with it with a loan payment still to the, like, if they have the cash to buy it. They'd still be paying five percent and they'd still be, it'd still be about sixty-four grand a year because the life department can't be without your cash for, you know, some, for a decade. And so we would still have to, still have to levy another sixty-four grand next year and the rural would still have to pay it, or, or not sixty-four grand, excuse me, but it's still be there, it's still be quite a even well, still be sixty grand rather than still or six hundred and ninety-eight thousand over ten years, it'd still be seventy grand every year that would need to be split, still thirty-five a year for both us and the rural. So still all the same, exact same affordability concerns, really. That is not to say, I mean, just with Patty, she said it's not bad if you terminate this one, it's just, we have a plan. And I think we have, I mean, we have a capital improvement plan that we run, we have software that is, actually just got a lot better. There is no reason why the city council within, I mean, within a month or so can't set a roadmap for that, they'll show you how the next five trucks get bought. And I think right now, that's probably a roadmap, a little bit of security and a plan will go a long way, and then I just know, just because I'm the city administrator, I hear everything else that goes on here, I know that I don't wanna use, well, I'll use my words carefully, but making an investment like this when the fire department gets noticed by the other departments, and it's not necessarily a favoritism thing, it's just, but it's perception, and that is certainly never, the city council's never trying to single out a department, telling them they're the premier department, but it's what happens and everybody would benefit from a roadmap, from the capital improvement plan that shows exactly how we're gonna do this, not just for the fire department, but for everybody. And I'll throw my two cents in that I think that, right, that for all of our emergency department facilities probably is a big sore spot, I mean, everybody's in a building that's at least sixty years old, so I just think that establishing a plan and giving, and giving every city department, the residents as well, you know, proof that you've got a plan to go forward, it's gonna be a whole lot more than one truck or one non-truck.
And I just, I'm sorry, I'm just, this is life and death, this truck, I mean, if we break down again. It could be life or death, this is a truck that you need.
We got five trucks that can back this one up if this one were to break down. And that's what I'll say, I don't believe that not buying this truck is not life or death. We have plans for that, that's why we have departments, that's why our department's that big, so I guess I'll just urge you, don't consider this a life or death decision, I actually think that's incredibly inappropriate, so.
I'm not saying it's completely life and death on this truck, but there's a lot of tools in it.
There's a lot of context that goes when you say something like that, and I.
I think we can vote. Um, my motion, may I have a second? Correct, Jake?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same side? Which carries? See, approve ambulance billing service agreement.
So in front of you is a proposal from B C P, their fire, EMS fire billing service. We've had this for some context in history, we've had a lot of trouble with our ambulance billing software in the last few years. I won't go into all those details, but we have about a hundred thousand dollars that's sitting out there that we have not collected for calls. And our billing service really is facing kind of a mutiny in their internals, and so if you remember a couple of years ago with our I T, when we were forced to switch, this is much like that. But Mike over at the EMS department's done some research, has actually spoke to this firm for quite a while. And feels very confident, and then we had a meeting today with EMS department, or EMS committee, and Mike recommended that, and he kind of gave us a little bit more of a look into specifics. And then as far as fees go, this one is a little different, we, our current ambulance billing firm, we pay a fee to everyone for bills, they bill, they might, those, that money might come, might not. This firm actually charges six percent on every, everything that they collect. So the incentive is theirs, and the more money they go and find, the less money, or the more money they get.
What happens when they can't collect?
Well, that is the reality of ambulance billing. What we bill out, I think we get about sixty to seventy percent of it, and then like Medicare or Medicaid, they just say that, don't pay what you say it costs. They take your bill and they slash forty percent, you get that back, and then there's a lot of run into a lot of courts that don't pay, they just put, mostly they haven't been reminded that they need to pay.
I'm just wondering with this contract, if they have a better track record?
Oh, sure. I don't have any specifics, any data for you, but that's, yeah, what Mike just said. And it's more a geography context, Springer, I'll just switch them, Houston, I think just switch them, but he said, and then Tri-State Ambulance is using them as well for special calls, and that's more ones that they need to bill a little aggressively, so.
Well, this is six percent, what was the other company charging?
The thing I like about this, Bob, is six percent of what they get for us. It's not just flat fee.
No.
Yeah.
I understand.
Their, their money, that's what I like about this. Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Yes, that's what she said, if it costs us, well, four thousand dollars more, which we need definitely for calls. That's exactly what I said.
Well, if they're having a better chance of collecting, we can make that real.
And then one, one reason to endorse this right, right away is that they will go after a lot of our old sale calls, they've already done that, and they'll go out as far as they can, which what we call our, our ARs and our agents, our adult development, that our current system is looking at that at all, that it won't exist in six weeks.
We need a motion to, to this thing?
Yes, a motion to approve the proposal from B C P.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed, same side? Approve parts and a rectoraptor job description.
So this, this is for the dentist's director, I should say manager, but in front of you is our new plan for this year. We've had some history, trouble in the past with our lifeguard staffing, trouble in the past with baseball staffing, and feel that if we combine our ball and our pool in one position and pay it a little bit more, that we might be able to find somebody that's interested helping out the whole summer, and what you have in front of you is that job descriptions.
What paper week are you looking at?
We budgeted up to twenty-four an hour, does that sound right?
Weeks of twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Why the change? Because we haven't really filled, we've had so much trouble filling positions, we didn't fill the ball manager last year. And and because we, our relationship with the ball program is changing as well, the coaches are taking on more responsibility, so our responsibility is shifting into owning the field and maintaining the field, and then the umpires as well, but not as much with the actual ball program, so that opens it up. Frankly, to have people that are less interested in it, and people don't have a connection to our specific ball program, there's still people that are, you know, it's still people are interested in doing the maintenance work, and then because we want to trial out how kind of spreading out that parts maintenance will look, because our guys have been getting into a lot more specific projects and all that, and it's always been my philosophy that part staff, like lifeguards, things like that, where work's good if they're in charge of the maintenance of of the facility, all that, the buy-in kind of goes up, and everybody's chipping in a little bit more.
On the public works side, you know, afternoon projects or all-day projects, if they're interrupted with that, we'll do ball field prep work, strike and drag, you know, that stuff. Not that we can't do it, but it, it definitely interrupts our day-to-day schedule, it's a lot of days, it's kind of tight with it down.
How many hours a week do you say?
Um, about thirty at lunch, if you.
Okay.
For your last year's part-time manager, what, what, how many hours did you?
Over thirty.
And my one, I, I guess I had a, a couple of concerns going into it, and be do they have time to do both if they're, especially if they have to be filling in at the lifeguard companies for some shifts?
Sure, yes, that is one I wanted to bring up, I we, in early discussions, we talked about not making that a requirement specifically for that reason, to make sure that they have the time, and that is something that I'm definitely open to, and I kind of more thinking about it, I kind of like that a little bit better.
Sure. And then my other concern would be, is, right, is there a large enough pool of folks who have experience in both avenues to be able to do a job well? I mean, that, presumably you would want more experienced on the pool.
Precisely, yeah.
Would they would still be able to do the ball managerial stuff without any experience?
The idea is we could train them on the ball if they bring the pool, because we're doing, last year we did a good amount of that ball program in-house here, just like the administrative side of it, so we have enough. so we have enough, uh, we could definitely get that up to speed, we will have to anyway, uh, with the registration, things like that, we're gonna be involved no matter what. And so if we can take as much of that paperwork on here, then it makes the job out there that much easier that we can reach it that much quicker.
Seems to me thirty hours is pretty light for doing both of these jobs, is that gonna be a problem if they're up in the forties?
Um, no, it would not.
Then I would be paying overtime, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, um, and we, we budgeted some of that, some overtime.
All right.
But, um, I mean, flexibility is always the name of the game and we want to really encourage people, um, whoever would have taken this position to be flexible and split shifts and all that, just to keep overtime in check, but I think, um, really with combining two positions, I think we would be fine with wages anyway, we came in pretty decent last year.
How would you identify a pool of potential applicants?
Um.
Pardon the pun.
We would, I just, I don't, no other plan than to advertise is normal. Uh, we'd advertise in the, in the paper and on Facebook and all that, um, and we've got some names that have already been suggested to us, so we would go find those people and force them to apply.
Thirty, thirty hours a week, do they get benefits then?
No, that's for that benefit. Because. And I can, because January twenty-seventh, I can take this job description and work on it for two weeks, that'd be fun as well.
You want a motion then?
Um, no, if, if the decision of the council is you wanna talk about a little bit more, then I think that'd be appropriate, I can just take it, I don't need any motion.
Are we table for that?
Yeah.
For two weeks?
And then I'll get in touch with you and you, I'll schedule something.
We're tabling this discussion?
Yes. Hard to think about swimming pool in January, but we got.
Overtime report, a period January sixth through the nineteenth. You good? Full business is done. Announcements, next regular council meeting is scheduled for Monday, February thirteenth at six P M.
Sorry, that's way off.
Yeah.
Yeah, go down. That's right, yeah.
Jake's moving meetings now.
I have plans with my mom on.
What's the date, brother?
Uh, Monday, February tenth.
Monday, February tenth at six P M. And I am going to return the meeting. Take care.